I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order on November 21st here. We do have all members present, we have established quorum. We have a disposition of a couple of meeting minutes. One is dated October 3rd and the other is November 7th. On the 3rd Nicholas RJ and Paula were present. Do either of you three, including myself, have comments? Anything wrong? All right, all those in favor who were present at that meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition accepting the minutes? All right, and a few abstaining. November 7th was, I believe, all members were present except for myself. Any comments from the November 7th meeting minutes?
I just wondered if there was, if we captured all of the communications that we had regarding the proposed West State Street project. I didn't sit through or re-watch it.
Yeah, this is actually communication. I think it covers enough of it.
Was there something you thought was lacking on it?
Just it felt like we had a pretty good discussion on different items, but it does identify some of the key points, which were of course the dumpsters, centralized recycling, and then the whole issue about vehicle pedestrian possible conflicts when that alley becomes more of a greater use in terms of vehicles.
I move we accept the minutes of November 7th.
Second.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, and I abstain. All right, that takes care of our minutes. We do have one case on the agenda today, it is number 13, 17 to 2013. It is for town communication special use permit out of Title 43. It's the Sprint Tower, or at least the applicant is with Sprint. It's on East Washington Street. Mr. Paskey, would you like to provide us the commission a brief summary?
Yes, the applicant's not able to be here. He got stuck up in Marysville in another project this morning and he called me and I just, this is a very simple modification to the tower. This company will be installing basically the fiber optic going from the telephone pole, I guess it'd be on the southwest corner, right behind the building, coming up. If you've ever met on the garage, there's that trough on the west wall and on the south wall.
The middle one?
That they'll be running new fiber optic wire inside of that trough to the Sprint Tower that looks like is owned by Horizon, so I don't. But, so that's what this application is for, the modification. It does meet our requirements for priority one, since it's a city tower, does not require any bonding.
It's really they're not modifying the tower, but the connection to the tower.
That is correct. That is correct.
We had already reviewed this preliminary, correct?
No.
Or is, was that a similar to Horizon?
That's, we're, what I'm finding out is, it's hard for me to say for sure, between Sprint, Horizon, AT&amp;T, and all of them is, when they, when they do these projects, each little part, being it the fiber optic, the modification, the tower, the antennas, they're all done by different parties. And they're doing it under different permit actually, so therefore, you know, as it is right now, we're running each part through because it's all being done by somebody differently and each time it's a different modification, so whether this is part of the one we approved as far as the antennas go a month or two ago, I do not know. And trust me, I spent many of the phone calls trying to figure it out, talking to different parties, and they don't seem to know. So we're on the safe side and I made them go through this process and they've done so.
Well, I guess where I get confused is that the client revisions are all dated 2003 and that this is supposedly a new, new working. So I assume they're using original drawings from 2003.
Reusing original drawings, yeah.
So I, what I'm assuming is happening, and I would, I would actually make a motion that we take this back to Sprint, is I don't think they're incorporating the changes that were made by the other vendor on this tower.
And that's why they submitted a separate packet and...
Right, but it's, I, they're basing it on drawings from 2003, not drawings of what's the existing conditions, and we just approved someone making modifications to this tower.
It's hard for me to speak, they're not here.
I, well, I understand. I'm not...
That trough, if you've ever been up there, that trough has probably got three or four different companies fiber optics lines in it going to the two different towers that are up there. So what we've done before, basically from what I understand, the guy's words to me this morning were this, providing path for AT&amp;T to pull fiber optic cable on the south wall and the west wall. That was his words.
He's at AT&amp;T?
He's like, when you have, he's, his description to me was, you have Time Warner at home, but it's Roadrunner wire for your cable, that's the way these companies all work. So it's AT&amp;T wire, or providing path for AT&amp;T to, he's, he's a contractor representing Sprint that's pulling stuff for AT&amp;T to Horizon Tower, from what I can see going on here, so...
Well, we have a letter dated May 8th, or April 30th, but 2013...
Where is that? Okay, thank you.
But it's just now getting to us, and on that sheet preceding it, there's all sorts of diagrams written, and it says, "These are for bid purposes only, the final set of drawings will be sent at a later date."
I attached that with, because this was the stuff that was in that packet we had back in April when we did the other one.
Okay.
So, and then we were getting them, apparently, I thought it was all the same one. That's why I say I'm having a very difficult time in my office separating what is going on on all these wireless telecommunications between how frequently they're changing it and all the different providers and such. I mean, I don't know, so...
He didn't provide anything different?
The whole front part of this packet's recent. Everything from the third page, I recently submitted to me.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
I get it.
So... Basically what I hear Nicholas saying is they, they have an old drawing and basically they're replacing, modifying a wire or something that was done in 2003, and they just use the same drawings and said, "We're switching this wire." That's what they're saying.
I guess that, I'm not seeing what is the, is it basically the hand drawn stuff, you think?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Well, if you look at...
If you look at...
On R1, yeah.
R1, yeah.
That's hand drawn too.
All right.
He is available by phone if you have any questions or...
I mean, is this, some of these arrows and things, are those been stripped out?
They've been struck out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just...
Could just be highlighted.
No, those are highlights. Those are highlights.
Can you read them on your copies?
Yeah.
Oh, they're highlighted, okay. Yeah, it looks like a strike through on our copies. So we have a trench and conduit 10 foot from pole to building.
Which I doubt very seriously if that falls 10 feet away from the corner, and I told them that. They said, "But that's what they put in there."
Install riser...
Risor, supposed to be.
Okay. From base of pole to MMPT. MMPT at top of utility pole, so I guess it's going to go all the way up to the pole, this MMPT equipment at the top. And then there's, he's pointing out there's an existing two inch conduit heading to shelter.
Yep.
And then at that, at the shelter, they're going to install new equipment on telco board inside of shelter. And then existing two inch conduit heading up 50 foot, heading up 50 feet from J-Box to shelter, approximate location where that two inch conduit ends. That's existing. That is, I take it to be the extent of the modification, so really most of this is, all right, so on the elevation, A1 South elevation, there's some more information. It says, "Use B, two inches from MMP to Shelter."
So that one's on the first floor, the other one's on the sixth, wasn't it?
Yeah. There's that pole.
So it must not have been that trough I was talking about up top, there must be another one down there.
All right.
I see that first floor.
I guess really the vertical axis on the R1 plan does not show what floor it's coming up to.
Looks like actually E1's a little bit more descriptive of the existing condition, showing the utility pole, the power and telco runs along outside of first floor, parapet there. These are all existing. I think what, the only thing it looks like new that they're doing is installing this MMPT at the top of the pole, and then installing new equipment on telco board inside shelter.
I know they're running new cable because he told me that.
No, he didn't say that here, so I, I think it's got to be submitted as the document, it can't just be a verbal.
And was there a letter that went with this?
No.
No? This individual showed up in the office and...
I mean, this is the application, so...
Yeah, but I mean, if you look at the required supporting documentation to submit, he doesn't locate the nearest residential structure. Size of property, I guess that can be ascertained, but I don't think our dimensions provided for the shelter. Yeah, I, it's almost like I think using the existing documents is at a disadvantage here rather than just even sketching what the modifications are.
At very least, the narrative will be nice to know what's actually happening.
You guys can, we can call him, we can table it. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the applicant because I don't know anything about it. He was supposed to be here and he couldn't make it, called me, so...
It looks to me like the narrative's on R1. That's how I'm reading it at least, but...
I don't, I think what, I should speak for you, but I think a narrative that says what you've tried to tell us, you know, this is the person pulling the cable up to, through...
Which company's doing it, or why, and...
It says Alvarez? No, Edge Connects.
Daniel Alvarez, he works for Edge Connects, is a gentleman I was speaking with.
Did he say when they're hoping to commence work?
I didn't ask him about that. I mean, the last meeting, well, we sat here and discussed preliminary review and then final, these things are by code are supposed to go through two planning commission meetings, and then we decided that these simple modifications we can do in one. And if this is, in my opinion, I just, this is just nothing more than switching out of wire that's already in there from one type to a fiber optic type. So I didn't, therefore, based on what he told me, I didn't ask for much more, since it seemed like a pretty simple transition, but that's for him to speak. Again, I'm not going to sit here and act like I'm working for them.
And when they were here earlier this year, did we have the NC report?
Yes, I believe we did.
Does, is this like a, all right, this is the planning commission's special use permit, but do they have to get a building permit then as well to do this work?
Not from us, because we're in a building department. If it was a modification to the tower, or if they were putting antennas on it, then yes, they would need state building permits.
Right. Well, I guess, what I'm curious is, do the contractors have to be registered with the city of Athens?
Yes.
For this type of work?
Yep.
Okay, so that's all embedded at least. How do other commission members feel? I mean, do you want to try to get this person on a conference call? I assume we have that capacity here.
We would have in advance, have we?
Yeah, I mean, is this, I guess, does everyone feel, you know, it might be clear as mud, but is it clear enough? You know, is this the level that we're, we're looking for by going through the special use permitting process, or...
If it's only pulling wire, then that's it, but if it's anything else...
Well, I mean, I think we could say, put forward a motion that says, "We'll approve the addition of one, one additional cable on the outside of this building. Anything beyond that has to come back to the planning commission."
Okay, what I'm hearing here...
Because that's all we can kind of see right now, I guess. But even that, it says they're not pulling any cable. I mean, from, he verbally told John that, but I mean, looking at the document, it just says it's an existing cable.
Well, an April 30th letter says, "We'll be pulling fiber to the Sprint East area." See attached red line drawing, not sure if that's right.
Page R1 says there'll be trench, there'll be trench and conduit of 10 feet from the pole to building.
Yeah, so they're digging a trench?
They'll be in... Yeah, they will, but that pole, it's not 10 feet, it's that one around on the corner over there. As you go back, that alley right there next to the corner, that might be two feet away.
You know, we're, we're sitting here trying to discuss repairing the parking garage and the work that it needs to be done on it. At the same time, what I'm hearing here is that we're going to be hanging more stuff off of a trenching part of the foundation area. So I, you know, little lumbels are going off in my head here, okay? You know, when it starts talking about, you know, install riser from base to pole to MMPT, I'm not sure what an MMPT is. Does anybody know?
My suggestion is we call the guy or we table till he's come back, because I can't sit here and...
I would maybe table it.
I'm not the applicant, so...
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion. Any other comments or...
Again, it sounds very simple, but the fact is that going from 2003 drawings here, the letter is dated from earlier this year saying, "Okay, you're just going to pull some wire," but then when I read trenching and throwing it at the top of a pole, I don't even know whose pole that is. You know, I have to assume it's some theirs or somebody else's that is okay with it. I don't know what an MMPT is, for all I know, it looks like an elephant on the top of a pole and all done. You know, so I'd like more clarity on this, at least in narrative.
Like I said, I second it. Do they have their comments before we put forward a vote? All right, all those in favor of tabling this case 1317 to a later date, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, unanimous?
No Sprint stocking stuffers for us.
I guess not. They're not going to give us a free cell phone, that's for sure.
3,000, there's not going to be much of a sucker.
Well, I mean, I think the point to take from this is I think they're over complicating it by using all these existing documents in it. I just don't think it takes to account any modification that's been done in the past 10 years. Really, this is the only kind of it we have coming across. I'll go out and look when I leave, but it's just, I'm not in place to start.
I have to agree. It sounds like it's, the building on top of each other may not even be talking to each other to some extent.
Right.
And it could be, just because it's such a highly technical field, each company has its expertise, but, you know, as I say, when we talk about trenching next to a foundation of a parking garage, that's, that bothers me a little bit, and I don't know what that means by trenching. I mean, always hanging wire, yeah.
Right, I was exactly. What, I guess as we look at these special use permits going forward, I think back to the PUD, where we had an applicant that wanted to make modifications to the condominium, and what was explicitly stated in the PUD is they basically have to get approval from the original designer or architect or developer of that PUD to see if they could make that modification. Do we have that sort of same type of oversight with these towers that anyone who wants to co-locate or do something with the tower basically has to get permission, that it works with the original...
Well, they have to provide documentation that they're allowed to access it from, we've done that on all of these, I believe that's included in this on that letter, isn't it?
It, right. They didn't know on this one. So I questioned him because it wasn't signed, but he did get a, he was going to bring that today, and I said, "I'll just take that in when you come in with the other and submit it in here," but he got caught up, so...
So, because it's a Sprint Tower?
According to their letter, it's a Horizon Tower.
But they got permission from Edge Connects, which is an authorized representative of Sprint.
He works for Edge Connects.
So where's, I guess where's the permission, Leonard?
Let's move forward.
We tabled it. Did we table this?
I did. I guess, I think just in future, we shouldn't have seen this, I think is what I'm saying.
The tenant, it's, the letter from April 30th, 2013 clarifies that this is the tenant notifying the landlord, the city of Athens is the landlord, the tenant is notifying the landlord, so that should be clear that this is the tenant.
Okay.
So they have, they're allowed to access it, they're already paying rent for it, because it's no different than a tenant telling his landlord that he's doing something to a house, right?
Right, right.
Same thing.
All right, so this is really the city's tower, not anyone else's?
No, the city's structure.
The city owns the parking garage, the tenant occupies the tower.
Right, I'm talking about the tower itself. I didn't realize that, I'm sorry, that Sprint owned the tower, that's, that's where the confusion came from.
Right.
I apologize.
And it says right there that this letter is to advise you that it will be necessary within the next future, within the near future, for Sprint Nextel to make certain physical modifications to the equipment, and they're letting the landlord know that they're going to be doing that.
Right.
So Edge Connect is working on behalf of Sprint Nextel, who owns the tower. Is that right, Paula? Sprint owns the tower?
Or originally owned the tower.
Originally owned the tower.
I thought this is tabled. Sorry to be stickler.
No, no, you're right.
Now you see why I'm having issues with these, because I don't have any other stories, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of them.
Okay. Communications, we do have continued discussion of Title 3, 23 zoning code review.
Can I bring up something that, I think it falls under communications, maybe it's new? I got a phone call right before we came here, it's not in relation to this B3. The Tim Hortons project and the mall, the Athens Mall, I got a phone call from an architect out of Columbus that they are, you know, like hearing this, working to redesign the entire parking layout to create kind of a corridor through there, adding a bunch of trees and working with us to put this pork chop coming out of the road, the access, that we had all our concerns about the left-hand turn and everything. So they're trying to make it, if you come in that now and turn in there and go behind what would be the old Pizza Hut, you couldn't drive straight through to the other lane because of the parking for GameStop, or what is it, Games, that was called? Yeah, GameStop, and you have to, you would have to drive all the way up front of Kroger's, over and back out, and that was a concern with us taking the left-hand turn out of there. So what they're doing is creating sort of like a corridor, probably kind of like what you have behind Ruby Tuesdays and that through Walmarts and that now, where they have, basically you'll have the drive in front of Kroger's, and then you'll have a drive behind all the outbuildings. I told them, I said, "They're going to change the parking spaces so they're nine-foot width instead of 10-foot width, try to put a corridor through there, tree line both sides of it, and make it nice." So, and they're working with us right now, and then he said he'd try to have a plan to me before I left, but he said, "I seriously doubt it," and this, this was 15 minutes before I walked out of the door to come here, so I said I'd be happy to relay that message to the commission, and they said they, they would appreciate if I did. So, there you go.
Okay, so there's modifications going along here, improvements?
Yep, into that mall parking lot.
Okay. Just have to look at it. Hopefully we'll see the plans then, that sounds good.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be anything that comes through here because it wasn't a Title 41 or anything like that, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention on the commission because that was a concern that we had, it never, that that project did not have to come through as a Title 41, but I know everyone's been having concerns about the turns, left-hand turns on East State Street, and, and that mall's a significant part of the problem, and they're, they're working with, with us right now to fix that, so...
All right.
Step in the right direction, I think.
All right, thank you for that update. Getting back to the Title 23 zoning code review, I think we need to, again, begin expediting this, and if we could like set a goal for the date that we're going to have our comments to city council to help kind of guide our effort, that might be useful. Obviously, we're going to be, start interfering here with the holidays here soon, I know how that works on everybody's schedule, so I don't know if the third, third Thursday in December, I think that's ahead of...
Nicholas, it's a new council session, you should probably start in January.
Okay.
If then...
When is the, let me try to get this...
January.
January is when it begins?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, because the election, the old council, even though, none of the amendments are the same, it's all new, any legislation actually dies in place and starts, has to be started over anyway.
Okay, so we don't want to hit anywhere earlier than January.
We can have it put together by...
It'll probably be February, because they're going to have to have a hearing on it.
Well, we have to put something forward for them to...
Yeah, I'm just saying the goal for when we would...
I mean, it's not going to be the first meeting in January.
Okay.
It's slow.
All right, so, I mean, I guess we want to have maybe, look to try to be voting on our recommendations by the first meeting in February?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I would try, okay, yeah.
And it does, you know, and I think, again, I'm not saying we're, we're there, but just try to get this beyond...
Get a deadline sent out.
Exactly. We all work better with a deadline.
Mm-hmm, yes. At least I think we work better with deadlines.
All right, okay. Where, we had last left this was the B3, we were discussing all the principal permitted uses. I don't see, yeah, I don't see any, oh, we did discuss some of it, I think Eakshar for putting this, to get these summary together. So, well, I guess some of this is really dated from when we kind of backtracked and looked at it, starting at the residential. But on October 17th, we did discuss a bit of the B3, and I think we were still kind of working to complete our review.
Since we're on B3 and actually B2, I'm looking at the review there, I'm aware that the zoning board appeals turned down the front alley variance request, is that the case, John?
That is correct. They were requesting to put a 20-unit apartment building, three-story stall on front alley with zero first-floor commercial space, parking, half the parking underneath the building coming off the fern, the other half being off of the alley behind Carpenter Hall. The planning commission, or excuse me, the board of zoning appeal shot that down three to two, since it did not have first-floor commercial.
Is that a through?
I'm sorry.
Is it a through lot? Does it go to...
No, Carpenter.
It is a through lot.
It is?
Yeah.
Counting to that alley behind Carpenter Hall, yes.
No.
It's not, so it's not, nothing is being developed on the front?
On Carpenter.
On Carpenter.
On Carpenter, oh, you asked on, no, it does not go through to Carpenter. It goes through, there's an alley behind Carpenter Hall.
Right, we talked about that, I understood that, but I thought maybe it was a through lot since there were 20 units where once there was one house, right?
There's two houses.
I had a pull-off.
There's two houses there. Yeah, it's not, and I know which house you're talking, no, it's not that one.
I was just looking for a way to...
The reason why I bring it up is I wonder if we should consider, and this has been since 2000, I think the restriction on residential on the first floor, or, and again, what's occurred is the shift from definition of parking on the first floor for the apartments above is considered part of the residential and not business. That's the case, right? Am I stating it correctly?
Yeah, that's how the, I think law director put it.
Okay, I would wonder whether we want to put this into some kind of conditional permitted use to allow parking on the first floor for B2s and B3s, and I say that because I haven't watched the entire video for the zoning board appeals, but I, I get the feeling that this was because of the ambiguity of what is required, and because of the change in the interpretation of this, they really don't want to mess with it. I'm not saying it really well, but the fact is, they, if we put this into conditional permitted use as a, for B2 and B3, then they could evaluate it, they'd have some kind of guidance, I think.
It would still go back to them.
It would, but...
And then the question is, is it in character with the neighborhood, et cetera, those are the conditions, our conditions in our B, in our conditional uses. There's only three items and they're not very specific, so I don't... So I don't know if that kind of still throws them in their lap as to...
It would throw it in a lap from my point of view and give it a citizen input. But again, the conversation that we're hearing here is that they, we would try putting a business on Fern Street, which I don't think would have any viability. So I don't, you know, again, the idea to require that, and obviously this development stuck because of this. I mean, we could put something there, unlike Stimson where you could actually have a business on the front or on first floor. This technically, from my point of view, is an alleyway. And I'm not really going to bet on it, I'm just looking at saying, okay, we're, we still have this blanket B2, B3, B2D. And, you know, do we start doing it by zone? Do we start doing it and saying, do we move things, some conditions into something, an area where it could be vetted by a citizen board? And I just throw that out. I'm not, I'm not advocating it, but I'm looking at, I, I realize they just, they just ran flat into it and I know Mr. Chamberlain's probably going to be on my front door sooner or later again.
Well, I know, you know, Mr. Logue's often recommended that we look at overlays as well as something that, you know, is there Fern Street overlay that, you know, where it could still be in the B3, but there's a special conditions that are permitted in that space or et cetera, Stimson Avenue.
I think the businesses have all moved down, and if the citizen board were to look at that and you say one of the criteria would be, does it fit within the nature of what's occurring there? Well, that is what's down Fern Alley.
I would say that it's probably dangerous to respond very quickly to something like this because who knows? But I guess I also was wondering, how much space is there and if it's a totally R use? Is there enough space for a 20-unit building and with two former residential yards there?
There is enough space using the B bulk controls. If it was to be, say, rezoned to R3, which is something that the planning, or the BZA was recommending may be done, that it would be...
It's R3 now, you mean to B2.
No, it's B3.
It's B2, but when it's totally residential, then you're supposed to use the residential bulk controls.
No, only if it's in a B1 and it butts in R zone.
Oh, that's what I thought, oh, we should have changed that. But you know, it seems to me that you buy a cheap, a house that was a single house, that was a grandfathered house, and then you're allowed to put 20 units there in a relatively crowded neighborhood.
No green space.
And, and we've put a million dollars of infrastructure, at least in the last 10 years down that road. And maybe we don't define it as a road anymore. Maybe we say buy the front yard and make a through lot out of it.
So the proposal by the planning, or the board, keep saying that, the Board of Zoning Appeals was that it be an R3, and, but then they would be coming in for multiple variances for setbacks.
But they're not permitted to do a use variance, are they?
No.
No.
Well, wasn't that what he was asking for?
He was asking to allow no first-floor commercial in a B3.
The best of both worlds. I mean, you know, I have nothing specific against him, but I think that what it does is we're, we're sort of looking at the law and manipulating it a little bit more and a little bit more. But I think the reason why we have this law was it was supposed to be protect the business use. Okay, so maybe this business use isn't an appropriate one. But I'm not sure about a 20-unit apartment in that nearest street.
20 beds.
20 beds? 20-bed apartment on that street? I mean, you know what was there before?
Two houses, total of nine beds, I believe.
Yeah, and that was really pushing it. I mean, so I guess as I looked at it, I said, oh, everybody's getting all hot and bothered about it, but here we are talking about the business use disappearing. Well, of course they'll disappear because it's so economical, so advantageous to have the, have the residential for the students, for student housing. And is it a long-term thing or is it a short-term thing? I suppose it's long-term. I'm the only one talking, but I just, you know...
No, no. I hear what you're saying, you know, especially if you get to go by the business...
I thought maybe we should just back out of it.
...control, early residential use.
And I think that's where we started this, back with Bellavino, is alright, they do put commercial on the first floor, and I think that's what Mayor's asking too, is alright, how much of the first floor has got to be commercial? How much can still be parking for the residential, if any? That's, those are the unknowns, and those are the questions I keep getting asked that I can't answer. So I just, you know...
Everybody wants to buy cheap and make a lot of money, but what about if we say, okay, if you're going to have a residential use there, then have a little more space so they can throw a frisbee or something? Instead of having them, all the advantages of both worlds, right?
I denied it.
Well, alright, and it's, it would be a use variance. I mean, you know, he was asking for, what is in effect, changing it to a single, to a residential use, then it wouldn't conform. Why not say, okay, we will change this, you can front on Fern Alley, but you have to have the whole lot, use a through lot approach? You know, so they have to buy a little more, so they don't have to externalize their, their uses on the neighborhoods. Because that's where it goes. I mean, you know, somebody's ox is going to get gored. He makes lots more money and he's got an investment here. Two shoddy houses are going to be replaced by a better one. But I think that, and you know, he'll be mad at me, just like Mr. What's-his-name was mad at me, Wasserman. But you know, in a certain sense, and I didn't even vote on the initial one, but in a certain sense, you can't have it both ways. It's either a residential or it's not. Alright, so we could say that's not a street anymore, it's an alley. What would that do then? That was what I was thinking in the morning as I was reading the whining in the paper from the zoning board. If we say it's not, it's, it's the railroad right-of-way going up there, and we have it, we have a lot of infrastructure in there. What if we say, just an alley now? Now deal with it. What's then?
Well, okay, I'm, I'm not really getting, you know, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just look and say, I know for corn wells propping at Court Side, they were, for many years they were trying to put businesses in the first floor on the back part of those apartments.
PUDs.
As a PUD, yes. And that's a different animal, granted. And that's it. They had to go through the process just to be able to change that, I believe, to council, if my memory is correct. I look at the structures on Rose, the other side of that, which is technically, I don't think is even ours. I don't think it's a city right-of-way. But then it comes down to, they have frontage. If they don't have, if that's not a right-of-way, you know, there's that, there's a brick house in the middle of it that has, you know, that, obviously it's a B3 zone. It's non-conforming because it has residential, it's a house.
Well, so maybe we should ask Mr. Logue to give us a recommendation as a plan or what we would do with this particular structure. I mean, they're both right-of, rights-of-way from an old-time development that never happened. You know, just like behind Bellavino, actually, where there was an infrastructural thing going there. But we haven't, we can't abandon it.
No, and, and again, I'm just, you know, I'm not saying we act on it, you know, we're looking at the B zones here.
No, no, I agree. I mean, I just wanted to make sure, I thought, well, through is the through lot, it's solved, right?
I don't...
But you know, they don't want a postage stamp with 20 units on it.
This lot in particular has got alleys on all four sides.
How many square feet is it?
I don't know.
Is it like two 40-foot lots, 100 feet deep? 400 square feet?
No, I do not know. It's, it's, they're, they're wider than they are deep. So...
What's on the Carpenter side? I thought Carpenter...
Carpenter side, it's the backside of...
Carpenter Hall, right?
Of Carpenter Hall and, well, actually behind the church, yeah.
Central venue.
Where the old auto place was.
Right.
So how old is Carpenter Hall?
It's been there since the mid-'70s, I think.
Wasn't it a PUD too? Oh, it was a residential development.
Yeah. And again, that's, I don't...
Predates the commercial.
First floor and residential on the B3 took place, according to, you would probably know all of both of you. 2001, I was told.
2000, 2001, I think was when we changed the zoning at that time. I should say we, I think it was Ed Baum and...
B2.
You guys did. Okay, it's, it's nothing I'll be soft today, it's just, I'm trying to look at, you know, when we start looking at this stuff, I, I, the other thing, of course, I was at the Zero Waste meeting sometime in the past couple of weeks, and really I'd like to see a very sharply delineated square footage. This has to do with the landbonds as well, square footage for requirement for trash and recyclables.
Agreed.
You know, so that's a, you know...
It's only been 30 years.
Well, I, you know, while we haven't put it in yet.
I know.
It could be another 30 years, okay?
Another 30 years without garbage.
But I'm just trying to think, you know, we're, we're trying to take a revamp of this and I'd rather, you know, I know we discussed this, but if we start and say, okay, we've got a deadline to start looking at this stuff, I want to make sure these things get folded in, in some appropriate way.
I just want to say, if you go down Fern Alley and you look at the two properties, there, there is some semblance of some sort of space there now. I think it would disappear.
Definitely. It would look like the other one on the west, east side of Fern, southeast side.
I'm, I'm not opposed...
The children play, you know?
I'm not opposed to having it developed, but I think that we need to have some basis that isn't the zoning board.
Well, it'd be us, or council.
Oh, yeah, well...
And then we'd be looking at case by case, or we just, we do, we do a fix here.
This is the unique area and it needs some unique thinking. But the intensity of land use for the proposal is way too much, in my opinion.
Well, would you see downtown be less intense?
I'm talking about those two strips of land that have turned, because of the pressure of student housing, have turned from businesses, in my memory, into residential because it's much more profitable. Okay, so we've started the process, we continue it, but do we continue it at such a high density? Because that has a negative impact on the residential neighborhoods on the other side.
Do you, okay, and if I...
Extra cars, parking, I mean, you know, I deliver food to Carpenter Hall and can't find an parking place, you know?
Realize, if we were, with our discussion last year, year before, was turning this area into BTD, which means you could use the parking garage for the commercial parking. And therefore that'd be, would that be more of intensification or less? On the other hand, the bulk controls are such that you can have taller buildings, I think, in a B3, no, B2D.
Best of all worlds, this proposal.
So, conceptually, which way do we want to go on this? I mean, if we, if we say, let's rezone it.
Overlay.
Overlay.
I think overlay because it's unique, but the intensity of land use cannot be such that it clogs up that area to the point where it impacts the neighborhood.
Are you talking about an overlay for Fern Alley?
And Rose.
Pretty small area.
And Rose. I mean, its background, its background is Athens.
Right.
But we have a million dollars of infrastructure. I remember it well, in that...
Oh, we dropped a good chunk of money into it.
We dropped a big bunch of money on Fern Alley.
Under buildings and...
But because they're carrying all of the materials from the north.
Oh, it's...
Across the street and then, it's a big storm sewer and then also...
Storm and sanitary, I believe.
And sanitary because of the intense development in the uptown area, which is not abating.
And I think we've been informed that AEP would like to revamp their electrical systems in this whole south, north corner.
It's about time. I mean, remember Leslie?
Yeah, oh yeah, the arcing transformers back there.
Good.
Alright.
Sorry to get off top.
No, it's, it's all top, it's B3.
It's B3, yeah.
These are the unique, unique areas that we find within, all of Athens is unique, right? That's all around here, so... But that, there's one such unique area in the B3 zone. Permitted, I think one of the big issues that, at least, I think is important, and you can feel that one way or another, is that we accurately describe the principal permitted uses and accurately designate the accessory uses. So we don't have these, again, is parking accessory, when is parking accessory use? When is it a principal permitted use? Same with all of these. One of the big criticisms I had is in B2, and with the permitted accessory uses, and this goes back to our discussion here on B3, is that it, page, oh, numbering, kind of strange. Page one of the B2 business districts, so it'd be...
Back up to tomorrow.
Yeah, it's actually on both, this is for both B2D, it looks like B2, I'm sorry, so it's B2 and B1, that it's any accessory use in structure is permitted and regulated in the R3 zone, which to me makes no sense. It really should just be accessory uses for B1 zones and accessory uses for B3. Because why I bring that up is parking is permitted as an accessory use in R3.
That would be a commercial lot, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be associated or stipulated with the zoning?
It just, again, I, I don't like all the cross-contamination. I think if you're, someone's working in a, has a development or someone making modifications to a structure and they're in a particular zone, I think they'd need to go to that, that zone, see what is principally permitted there, what's conditionally permitted and what is an accessory structure in that zone.
In other words, these zones stand alone by...
Right, right. I think the going back and forth, you know, it just creates coordination issues. It's probably one thing from City Council on our standpoint. And it, and I think it's just can be much clearer that way. So again, when we're discussing the B3, I just, again, you don't want to be looking at the B2 or the B1 and have to constantly going back to another zone. I think it just creates more confusion.
And if you look at the first page, the planner had brought that up also.
I don't see any accessory uses in an R3.
Oh, are there, maybe I'm taking parking as a principal, I apologize.
Parking areas are principal permitted use in an R3, but...
So there's no accessories?
So no accessories are listed in the R3?
I don't see any. I see, I see A, principal permitted uses. Oh, I'm sorry, I, never mind. B is permitted accessory use, which goes back to your point there, Nicholas. Any accessory use or structure permitted and is regulated in the R2. And any accessory use or structure customarily incidental or accessory to a principal permitted use or conditionally permitted use in the R3. Okay.
Yeah, it just, and you, they never actually says what the accessory use is. It's just always, it's something that people, I guess intuitively, consider to be an accessory to, like for example, people consider a garage...
Right.
An accessory to a residential home.
Right.
So, alright, so someone going to, exactly, you know, next project we see on Fern Street is going to have a bunch of gazebo's everywhere because like, well, we, we could do it. And, you know, maybe that creates that park-like structure everyone's going for.
Okay.
Or drinking.
It's a Fern Follies, we'll call it, okay?
If you keep stepping back, because in, it goes back from R3, then it tells you to read the R2 accessory uses. R2 accessory uses say the same as in the R1. And then when you get into the R1, that's where you get back into those summer houses and servants' quarters are an accessory use, and so, I mean, that's permitted in a B3?
Right.
Well, it's still like, what exactly is a summer house or a servants' quarters? And then you're right, Nicholas, parking facilities are an accessory. All the way back in the R1, it says garages, carports, or other parking spaces for the exclusive use of residents of the premises.
Right.
So yeah, parking, correct, as you said.
But it changes in R3 where it's permitted.
And then swimming pools.
Right.
Right. Professional offices and home occupations.
So really what you're talking about is trying to decouple every zone from each other, being very specific. I think you brought this up a couple of years ago after.
Yeah, yeah.
And we ended up with a larger list of everything that was permitted.
Right, and I think everyone, no one wants to see that, so I think it's trying to find the tweener.
Yeah, okay.
Describe some sort of, whether it's, you know, I mean, John, I think this probably creates confusion from your office if we were to say, for example, in B2, looking back at that, for example, accessory uses in structures, not, customarily assess, so basically getting out most of the middle part and just saying accessory uses in the structures, customarily accessory and incidental to any of the permitted uses. Again, it, it says, you can have an accessory so long as the use you're putting in that principle, that's principally permitted in the B2, that it's typically accessory to that. Now, who determines that or what are we...
I don't mind, you know, the following, the nesting or stack system, what we want to call it. It just needs clarity.
But that's Richland Avenue too, right, isn't it? And the lots are really small.
Right.
And so it's not really even reasonable to imagine that they're going to put some of those accessory structures, like summer kitchens and other things there.
Right, I think I'm just pointing out, the only time we actually, or Paul actually pointed out is the only accessory uses we list are in R1. And then we just say, then it's stuff that we typically have, but we don't actually say what they are.
Well, then let's go to what you just said, customarily.
Right, then it's still open to interpretation, but it at least sort of sticks it to that.
Possibly. The zoning board could do it, right?
We're all volunteers, okay?
Yes.
There's only so much time.
And now we're making progress here.
You know, and just sort of as an aside, I thought we... You know, and just sort of as an aside, I thought we made a lot of progress, or at least I felt like I was really clear in my thinking that the B3 zone was way too detailed and the lots in the zone are way too small for most of these things, and we are short on business zones. You know, that's my takeaway, those were the things that I went, you know, because you cannot imagine some of these things being in that B3 zone, because there's just not enough room.
But when you say you're thinking in terms of Court Street, there's B3 in that-
No, I'm thinking of-
West State, East State Street?
Yeah, I was thinking of, um-
The north side is.
Yeah, the north side of the, and I was especially thinking of Stimson for the B3, where the pressure for student housing is much more intense. I mean, it seems like we were finally facing the reality, the elephant under the tent is really the student housing, that we are putting in the B zones and we're forcing the business zones to, and maybe they don't need business zones anymore, maybe they don't need any space, but I can see-
I'm not disagreeing with you, but again, we're discussing zoning and market forces at the same time, and I'm not sure-
Well, then the market forces are, have spoken, I mean, we, we have residential, well, I don't know that we can do it, I think the cat is out of the bag, but we could have done it 20 years ago.
Well, okay, we could modify so it's not impinging anymore or as badly.
I agree. I mean, I think-
But how?
Well, that's the, I think the recognition, I think the principally permitted uses, we imply that we could do these things on Stimson, West State, I don't see them happening.
The contract yards?
Yeah, all that stuff. I mean, you just start making, going through the list, and, I mean, we need to find another spot to put this stuff.
Well, you know, we threw this sexually oriented business uses as well as the gambling one, or sort of sweet takes-
Internet cafe.
Into here, and yet we gave a parcel within 1,000 feet restriction that pretty much eliminates the, you know, 95% of each B3 zone-
Absolutely.
-from doing that use.
Is that one you want to whittle down so it's more amenable? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, it's not very explicit on those two for some reason, yet-
It does-
That's to protect Morse Avenue, come on. I mean, get right down to it.
Again, what you're looking at, of course, is many of these things have been put in here in response.
Exactly.
Right.
After the, you know, the horse is out the door, I think, to just don't do it.
So, how can we have a business zone that, I don't know, it just seems like we need to do it, and yet the, the pressure for student housing is there?
Well, again, we could, we could start delineating different-
And parking, man.
And parking, yeah. Absolutely.
For commercial and for student housing, if you're looking at a B3 like Stimson.
And I've been minding my whole life on student tuition, so I, and I'm not against it, but I do think that it, to call this B3 and to have what happens there, I mean, the real world, the market forces are going to favor student housing.
Okay, I'm not su, okay, a couple of things come to mind, one is that we can delineate different B3s, that's one way to address this problem.
Yeah, that's good.
Two, you know, and, you know, I'm a big listener of NPR, of course, they talk about the new millennials who don't really want to get in a car, don't really want to drive, want to be in the downtown area. You know, they had a whole article where the people are actually working in the suburbs and living in the city because the jobs, unfortunately, the businesses are out there and, but they're living in town, outside of town.
All of my kids live in, in the inner city.
Okay, and they all have cars?
Some do, some don't.
Some don't. Okay, so, do they work in the inner city as well?
Yep, some, two do.
Okay. So, this, this, what's the dynamic we're trying to address here? Is it the student housing is trying to regulate proper growth of our city, or expansion, or maintain what we have? And I, I-
Make it livable.
Make it livable.
Yeah. And keep the profits, keep the profit the people have. I mean, allow a reasonable profit to be made on the investment in the land, but not to take too much, that it causes the other property owners to lose.
Okay.
Preserve public health and safety, I'm sorry, RJ, I think you're getting rid of that. He lost it.
No, I think, I just think it's a recognition that we need to, of maybe redirection, where we want ideally business to go, where we want it to grow and develop in the future, and where we recognize that there are certain obstacles in the sense of student housing. I mean, when we're talking about living in the inner city of Athens, I don't know that a lot of non-students want to live next door to, you know, a building full of students, the reality. So, that reality doesn't conform to the Athens picture, you know, it might be good for Detroit or New York or something like that, but that's not Athens, because, you know, basically, I think student housing, to a big degree, with the exception of something like the Summit or University Courtyard, has been kind of ceded to the downtown area or near downtown area. And, and to ask business now to reexamine that and say, well, you know, is there really an opportunity for, for me to develop a business in this area, you know, I, I think that they would probably choose not at this stage, you know.
Is that because of the cost of the real estate, or is that because the-
I think you're looking at parking, I think you're looking at the age of the buildings, as far as the, the ability to reconfigure a building to, to my office's needs. I think you're talking about the density of, of student residents that are there, that, you know, now, there's one, on East State Street, there's a, a financial service that has opened up in what is now largely a residential, student residential area. However, you also have the fact that it's on a main street, not in, in the downtown area. They do have parking for what they need, and, you know, it's great that they've, they've taken this old house and reconfigured it to where, you know, they have their needs met, and at the same time, it still fits into the decorum of the, of the neighborhood itself. So, you know, but that's rare. And, and so, I think maybe what we needed to do, one of the things I think that when people were discussing the new potential sewer system going from, in the south of Athens and going out into, to the county, that, you know, one of the things that I spoke with people about was the fact that they liked the idea, the possibilities of being able to develop business in that, that zone, so.
But where does that leave the downtown then? And that's not even inside the city where there is any zoning.
Well, I mean, I think you see, you see with the, the project here on, was it on Washington, or was it State Street here at the last meeting where Lamborn's is located?
West Street.
Putting residential above, you saw that happen at the People's Bank, you saw it happen at the, where the Blue Gator was, or what, what business is now located in there. So, I think you, you do see that push of, you know, preserving the commercial space on the ground level and putting in the residential above, so I mean-
But again, it's a limited, what you're talking about, you're talking about restaurants, you're talking about a few, just a few retail places, but-
Not like a wholesale office building that people are putting in.
A student-oriented business, large, right?
Right.
Wholesale office buildings that require, you know, large swasse parking, which is not downtown.
Right, which is why I say that I don't know that, you know, as Nancy says, the cat's out of the bag, and you said the horse is out of the stall, so.
All kinds of metaphors.
But, okay, let's look at what, I look at Court Street, for instance, right now, five on Court, which, the anchor business area is Kinko's. On the south floor is what, a church, you know?
Well, top and bottom church.
Top and bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the question arises, is that, is that the type of business we want? I mean, is that, I don't know how they finance it, but at the same time, I look and say that, you know, there's no parking, obviously, the parking's a difficulty, difficult thing to put a business in there.
Well, with the, for instance, with the church, it, it worked because there's no business on Sundays in the morning, so, you know, basically, cars can park up and down Court Street and attend the church.
Okay.
Don't you park on, at a meter? That's what I would do, every time I go to Kinko's.
We have a parking garage, and I say that all the time, people say there's no parking, I said I have a parking garage.
No, but if you're going for a few minutes, you, you know, you just, or walk.
Right, I know.
Okay.
I think basically uptown is, is, when I see uptown, I think of it in terms of pedestrian, I see it in terms of, it's a throughway in terms of vehicle use to other parts of Athens, but in, in general, I, I see it as a pedestrian residential-
Uptown.
Uptown, with, with business mixed in.
Okay, so, with that, if that's the intent, and maybe we should be folding all the way back to the comprehensive plan, which of course is getting out of date, if that's the intent, then shouldn't we be also waiving the parking requirements for those residential areas? I mean, if you're, you say it's a pedestrian area, pedestrian shopping, pedestrian living.
It's for the shopping, not for the residential.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, you know, too.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's a pedestrian, you know, you, you park and then you walk up and down.
Right, in other words, it's not a lot of people, well, though, I mean, in downtown area, you do get a lot of individuals from outside the area using the commercial stuff, but I think you want to have it to be a healthy mix of people from out of the area, parking to go to commercial and residential that already live in the area using those facilities.
I don't know if you have, have access to, to research, but, you know, I would venture to say that probably a lot of your business that has developed over the last 10 or 15 years is out of people's homes.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, that's where I think a lot of, you know, in terms of professors, in terms of professional people who might, you know, my wife, for instance, and it's just like, we can't afford to, and we don't have any need for traditional business space, commercial space. So, it's something that, when I brought up the idea last year, about the idea of, do we need, can we assign a certain percentage of bot, of the bottom floor for business when we talk about in the future? Can we combine that with parking, which we have limited availability of, with a smaller percentage of business space on that first floor? Because I just don't know that right now and in the future, trending wise, that people are going to have a particular need for a lot of commercial space for what they're doing.
So, okay, so the argument there is that we don't need as much business, it sounds, you want to, you want more business?
No, I don't, I, we have all the-
I'm just trying, you know, I'm trying to figure out.
You know, I mean, what I, what I would say is that you're right in a certain sense, I did say that, because I know RJ and other people have said, we're taking all of our business space, and then I look at this and I say, what are the chances these would be located in the existing B3s? And there's not a very big chance, and so by default, it seems to me it falls over into the student housing area. And I think RJ is right about the commercial structures that are, that are developing. I also would add, and then I maybe should shut up, I was listening to Joni Kornansky once, who talked about, where do you go for businesses? And then you started thinking, well, you know, I go to the pharmacy, and I go to the cleaners, and I go to the, no, so I use Rich, not Richland, but Stimson Avenue a lot more than I, and I hate to say this, than uptown, because a lot of stuff is going on there, and the post office.
And your larger boxes go out to East State Street.
Yeah.
We, okay, we, we looked at Lamborn's last week, two weeks ago, and really, the dialogue there is that, that used to be an automotive showroom. Cornwall Jewelers used to be a gas station. Brony's used to be an in-town body shop. So, those type of businesses have been migrating out, and those are basically automotive business that require automotive, cars. The Central Avenue View, I think, which is on Carpenter, right now, which is an office that, what you talked about, the, the mobile office space there, was an automotive. What's replacing it along the way? Actually, we now have two churches in there, we have, what, bars, we still have, I, I was talking to somebody who promotes the fact there's no really county bar out there anymore. I guess the Maplewood, it was there, they're crying about, yes, I don't know. But at the same time, you look and say, okay, so how do we craft it so we preserve something? As you said, the percentage is the carryout right now, the wine shop on Stimson, Wasserman's there, is that adequate space? Is that what we're going to ask the guy on Chamberlain to do on Fern? You got a percent, you have to do a percentage for the business, will that function as well?
It's like a bulk control.
Here's another metaphor, that should pass it.
That shit.
It should pass it.
For what? For businesses on the first floor?
On Fern.
On Fern.
I think so.
Well, I split the diff, I mean, on, on one end, you know, I think that we bow to the commercial, well, the, the residential inevitability of Fern, because I don't see that as terribly viable for, for commercial use. However, I do agree with that, you know, I would be concerned about the added density that you have in a, in a small, so where do we find, in that particular case, where do we find the, the balance in that area?
We, you know, there are cities that are a lot denser than we have, and they seem to make the garbage work to a certain extent, they seem to be able to find places to play. And I guess that's, that's my misadministration on that sense, that we can't make that work in, in this monopoly game.
Well, you, I think oftentimes you do, with the downtown district, you think, well, the, for example, with ours, the uptown playground, that's college green. You know, I mean, it isn't, everyone, if, if you want a house with a yard and things, that's the closest neighborhoods. You know, I mean, I think, people are looking for different things, whether they want to be outside mowing their lawn or not on the weekend, or, you know, doing weekend gardening, et cetera. So, I think there is different services and uses based on the, you know, scale of each community, and I think uptown's, it's a bigger scale, so therefore, we have bigger open space, but it's consolidated instead of divvied up amongst each parcel. That being said, we did talk about a couple of things, and I want to quickly change subject here, but we're still obviously talking about the, all the same items, is, we talked about religious worship in a couple of locations, but I don't, I never see that in the business zone as being permitted.
It's in R1.
Right.
Therefore, as far as the nested.
Yeah. As a, but not as a principally permitted use, so if it's in the R1, do we consider it a residential use? That should be only on the second story or above.
Schools, schools.
No, there's qualifiers for residential in other zones, as to where and how they're allowed to be located.
All right, so B2 district, principal permitted use is any convenience business or general business or services establishment.
Well, do we define service?
That's what I'm wondering, if it fits into that.
You go to church on Sunday, they call it a service. They do, right?
Is it a class that public or public use?
Yeah, definitely, church, absolutely.
Right. Well, now, I'm just trying to point out, there's things we're missing, but it sounds like it fits into the services establishment.
Okay, so, churches are permitted, principal permitted use in R1, that's where it first comes into line.
Right.
And it never comes in again?
It's sequential, isn't it permitted just by-
They're defined in R1 as being under institutional and cultural.
Yeah.
And they're permitted as long as they're located not less than 20 feet from any other lot.
20 feet from what was that?
Any other, any other lot in any R.
Says churches and other places of worship and Sunday school buildings located not less than 20 feet from any other lot in our zone, and then schools and colleges for academic institutions located not less than 40 feet, public libraries, public museums, public art galleries, and similar public cultural uses located not less than 20 feet from any other lot in the, in an R zone.
I would bet that most of the churches are grandfathered, with the exception, maybe that, well, this one up here probably falls into line on five on North Court.
I guess, yeah, and we just had a school and college open up at the worst building on Court Street, and I don't think it's 20 feet from any other lot.
Is that what it says there, too?
But it's, it's exempted because it's a OU.
State institution.
Yeah, we have an exemption in the code.
Even if it's at least?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that was just, use and at least got-
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I, I would like to see a change, but we tried and we didn't get it.
Take the fight.
At least there's a storefront there compared to what it was.
Hmm, okay.
All right, so that's, I just was concerned that we were skipping things and just kind of-
We haven't, I think.
Well, I think that the problem is, I mean, B3 is really thorny, but maybe we can just simple, if we start doing sub Bs, overlays, it'll be February of 2016 before we're done.
Well, I mean, I guess this point, I guess right now, we just use the stacking to go back to R1 and see that religious worship or institutional were, were permitted there, so therefore, it's permitted, then we're using that stacking and saying, well, B2 is permitted unless there's some sort of condition that we're laying out here, like, for example, residential is permitted in B, R1, but we're laying out in B2, well, it's got to be on the second story or above. So, we're not saying it's not permitted, we're saying automotive services- So we're not saying it's not permitted, we're saying automotive services has to be, you know, distanced from a R-zone. But, so we're just assuming that the, since in R1, the institutional, et cetera, lays out some sort of conditions, do those same conditions apply in the B2 or are they just gone then? Unless they're repeated.
The implication is that they're allowed.
They're allowed, but the conditions are removed.
Yeah.
In the 40-foot lot, it would be, it'd be a very thin church.
I guess I'm still not sold on that. I like the idea of removing the references to--
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to--
Or at least--
I guess, yeah, that's what I'm trying to point out, the confusion and trying to figure out, you know, I had to, to answer that, we had to go back to the R1 and then what general conditions still apply from that were set forth in R1 for the new one. And I think it does lengthen it, the code--
To reiterate--
By reiterating conditions that may still apply, but it also permits us to reconsider those conditions at each zone. So, in other words, conditions may vary across zones. The same thing that's permitted in each zone may have a different condition in the B2 as it does in the R1, for example. And I think we're, it was definitely in that direction because you start to see entertainment and club, you know, show up in the B2D, that it has to be 100 feet from an R-zone and then in B3. It's just, I guess it still has the same general condition, we don't know.
We should--
All right.
That was another thing we had talked about, was looking at the restrictions in terms of proximity to practically residential plans.
All right, so, I guess, what I would suggest is our next steps, and I don't mind doing this, it's trying to put together what, based on the comments we've had in our prior meetings and based on things that we didn't like about the last time we attempted sort of a full edit of the zones, is trying to incorporate these comments, again, not leaving room for interpretation, so not an outright laundry list of principal permitted uses, but again, still capturing what we have here that's principally permitted, but then trying to carry it across each zone. So try to put together an initial--
Separate zone.
Right. And then we could maybe use, if we look at it, I'll have it, I'll try to get it prepared by, let's see, this is the, you know, hereby our meeting in December, let's take a look at that real quick.
Next one's December 5th, it says.
And then, everyone's still available to meet on the 19th?
Hmm.
Hmm.
Yeah.
It's pushing.
We could always have, we could have a meeting if we have a quorum.
Exactly. Um, but everyone's going to be here the 5th?
Yes.
All right, I will try to get it put together then by that meeting then, so I'd rather have most people's input. We'll look at it and see, everyone can agree or disagree if that's the right direction and, you know, we can kind of go from there.
Okay.
But I think it's getting difficult with continuing to look at what we have, we need to start kind of putting out there what we're, where what we want and then go from there.
Okay, so I have one big question and it has to do with what is permitted residentially in any B3, B2D or zone? I mean, what is the, I was reading it over just now and it's all second story, is it? Is that it?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, unless it's grandfathered in.
Unless it's grandfathered in.
Okay. I mean, ultimately, that would be a wonderful city, but I'm not sure it's going to work that way.
B2, B2D and B3.
Okay, so--
And M.
No residential prohibited in M.
Yeah, and that's why I left M out because it's not going to, that is another--
And in each case, there's a parking requirement that restricts some of the stuff, I mean--
Even for a church, I think, that's going to restrict--
Parking, I don't have off-street parking offhand, but it's less. I mean, so many, so many cars, pused seats before, I forget the number for every parking space.
I think the business is a place to start, Nicholas, you're right. I just wondered about, you know, what was going on.
Off-street parking, table B, I think it is--
Yeah.
Churches or--
Yeah, again, I'm just talking about business. I know we started with businesses, went to residential, the whole residential, the business zone, but then I think we still got to kind of put forward the business one first.
It's the nature of this place.
So in your next meeting, you're going to make a proposal of what we're going to eliminate from this to clean it up?
Yeah--
Following up by answers.
And add, it sounds like.
Yeah, and I don't know what--
Are you speaking in terms of uses?
That, I'll just throw it out there, that's something that I was just playing with this morning, that I already started taking every use that is in the high basic building code and assigning it to one of our zones.
See, that's how I attempted it the first go-around, everyone was, thought it was too extensive.
But that was then and this is now.
Maybe, yeah, I've gotten you all to understand if--
Either that or--
And I've already started that necklace, if you want to come down and I'll--
Okay. All right, well, then I'll work with you, John, on this effort and we'll see if that's too much or, I mean, we could always reference it, but--
Well, we can modify a little. I mean, you know as well as I on the uses, you've got community halls--
Right.
Banquet halls, you could throw probably all them into the same halls.
Right, right.
But basic, the building code specifies each one of them.
Right, right.
And realize, in the zoning code, B3, for instance, we have a page and half sexually oriented as well as a page and a half of internet--
And they basically have the same conditions.
Yes.
We probably say sexually oriented, sweepstakes, these are your conditions.
Well, I was thinking in terms of, we're expanding different sections, we want to be very specific, you know, we've already done that to those two items.
Right.
So I can see where we might just--
They have the same distance requirements.
Oh, yeah, the distance are different?
The conditions, as far as, I mean, vast differences between strip clubs and internet cafes, so I mean, it's, the distance conditions are very, are identical.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the sexually oriented business one will probably change significantly in the near future based on law directors' recommendations.
Okay.
So they will not be the same.
I'm trying to catch these are out.
I think we'll still describe things as principally permitted, conditionally permitted and accessory, et cetera. I think it's just what those uses are.
And the existing lot size will enter into this.
Well--
I mean, that's the, all right, never mind, don't do it. I'll come back and ask that question.
Yeah, I think let's go with this and then, and then start seeing how that gets overlaid a little bit better. And I think that's where it goes back specifically to our discretion of bulk controls and how--
Here's bulk control.
Bulk controls in some areas are, what the bulk controls permit don't work at all in some areas where it's zoned that way.
Remember, Paul, 75% of the houses work.
I think I made it two meetings ago.
Oh, bulk controls, I think you gave us that.
And not to add to it, don't have to look at it now, just leave it in your panic, but you never cross it.
Okay.
I know, you know, the minimum lot size of there, square footage and then coverage as well as height.
All right, any other items to add to our communication? All right, again, always appreciate everybody's feedback and input, it's very important. Our reports from our city planner and director of code enforcement, any comments?
I don't have anything today.
Were you impressed with that dialogue here?
It was, it was a good conversation.
Okay.
Very good.
As long as you're not groaning about it.
Yeah.
You'll have to listen to what he says once he's back on the office.
Oh, my God, they returned the whole ground again.
They can't get focused.
We're moving forward, that's--
It's our circles.
As long as it's on the agenda, that's, we'll get there, it might just, it's going to take a while, but we keep it on the agenda, we keep talking about it, we're going to figure it out.
Okay.
That's how I see it.
Mr. Baskey?
I just give you a status of the VZA meeting from last week, but I think we've covered one case considerably enough. The other two were, 138 North Lancaster requested a front yard, zero, zero front yard setback to add a porch on the front of their house, and everyone cruts into the right of way. That did get approved and it will be going to city council where we wrote the license for the porch to be built on that one. And the other one was at that 101 Elmwood, they requested to put a fence in their front yard around the front yard of their house, in the corner of Elmwood and Shannon, and that as well got approved, so.
All right, any questions?
Just for Paul, I didn't get a chance to check the link on essence of Athens, how's that proceeding?
It's coming along very well. We had a meeting on Monday with some of our ad hoc committee to just kind of look at what we're doing. The student that we've been working with is putting together like these conceptual napkin sketch drawings for us, had some really incredible stuff for us. We're talking about using his stuff, which is all in black and white, as like a secondary document to the final plan and almost putting it together like it's some sort of a coloring book--
Oh.
--that we can distribute to local schools and to try to get people talking about this plan and talking about the ideas in it. The link, I think I provided you, was just a basic update, we were talking some things about, you know, the colors of Athens and the reason, there's a picture of a portion of your home on there.
Oh.
That's why I was showing you the link because we--
Purple.
The purple house, yeah.
I wouldn't advise that as a color of Athens.
Maybe not, yeah, but it's going very well. We're working with MKSK, a design firm out of Columbus, to help do some of the more detailed kind of ready-made drawings and design plans for us. They're providing some pro bono work for the plan and we expect to have something hopefully end of this year.
Okay. Where the Historic Preservation Commission alternate is being changed is going to council right now. Any progress on that?
That should be almost finalized and we're working on the certified local government application. Hope to have that done here in the next couple of weeks.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you both for your continued assistance to the commission. Opportunities for citizens to speak, I think this may have been one of our, you know, first